Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining tonight's Village Board Workshop. We have a few, a couple of presentations on the agenda tonight. We'll begin with some announcements, but first, opportunity to request and to add an item. I would like to add trustee approval for our proclamation for an Eagle Scout ceremony Thursday evening. So we'll put that at the end of board business. Announcements, Christmas tree collection will be on Wednesday, the 11th. Remove all ornaments, lights, et cetera. Place it at street side. Is it just the one pickup day? So it's just the one day. You have to get it right, or you can take it to Royal if you miss the pickup. Question. So between now and then, folks should keep, either keep their Christmas tree up or put it not on the street? Or what's the shouldn't block the sidewalk with it? If you have a place you can keep it, if you want to out of the house, but have a place you can keep it, that's not on the sidewalk, that's ideal. And let's see, so we are in the process of updating endpoints for our water meters throughout the service district, which includes the village of Nelsonville. Folks have gotten letters about some follow-up work that is needed. If you have questions about the follow-up that's needed specifically for your property, please reach out to us here at Village Hall. We will be following up as well. And we're aiming to get those done as soon as possible, so that by the end of this billing period, we have everyone on the new system and rolling along. Okay, first item is presentation of audit results for the fiscal year ending 5/30/2021. Is it John? Yes. Hi, John. I think you, I'm probably, Tweeps and I are probably only the only ones you've met before, maybe not even Tweeps.
John, can't hear you.
I haven't said anything yet, so.
It's shaking as if you're talking. It was strange. So we have trustee Laura Bozzi on the end, trustee Catherine Fatty, trustee Tweeps Phillips Woods, and trustee Lys Starbuck.
Good evening.
Last year, and I'm the carryover.
Okay.
John, I have your presentation loaded. I don't know if you have it.
I have it up as well. Maybe I can just share screens so I can go through it at my own pace rather than having to tell you to turn pages. Okay, let's see if. Apparently, screen sharing has been disabled.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
All right, go for it, John.
You should be able to.
There we go.
So if you could start by sort of telling us the purpose of the audit. This is done annually. What is the process?
Yes, we're your external independent auditors. We conduct the audit annually. We are given the financial data by the village. We have a formula that we use. We input the data and it tells us to what level of scrutiny we place the accounts under, and then we go through and we substantively test the accounts based on these numbers to obtain reasonable assurance that the numbers are accurate.
And you actually had folks in the field here in Village Hall working with Michelle and looking at documents and files, et cetera.
Yes, myself and a staff member were in the, at the village for three days, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, so tell us what you found.
Okay, let's see, let's see, okay, slideshow. Okay, can you see this?
No.
No.
Share screen at the bottom.
I did. See here.
We can share it from here and you can talk, Jeff. There you go. You got it.
Okay. Okay, can you see the presentation now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this is our audit presentation for the year ended May 31st, 2022. That's myself, John Costolo, as the engagement partner. Douglas Zimmerman, he's the technical review partner. And Justin Abbott was the engagement staff that both myself and Justin were out in the field for the, for the audit.
John, could you make your screen full screen so it's easier to for us to see?
You swap it? Yeah.
Okay, this is, okay. Mine had the full presentation on the main screen, which usually, okay. So for audit test work, we were out the week of September 26th. We issued the draft financial statements November 30th, and we are reviewing with the board today. Our audit results, we are issuing an unmodified, that's a clean opinion, which is what you want on, on the basic financial statements. All records and information requested by EFPR Group were freely available for our inspection. And the results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. This is financial results. This is village-wide. This is your full accrual where we include your long-term assets and liabilities. Total assets increased about $400,000 to a balance of just over $9 million. This was mainly a result of the village's New York State ERS pension liability becoming an asset due to changes in actuarial assumptions and an increase in the value of the length of service award program, otherwise known as LoCEP, their investments. These increases were offset by a decrease in net capital assets as depreciation exceeded additions. Deferred outflows.
The way we, we account for them.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So it's changes in the way we account for those items.
Well, the New York State pension, that's reported to you by New York State. You, you just report the number. The length of service award program, there was no change in the accounting for it. It's just that their investments went up in value. And capital assets, the depreciation, depreciation is straight line based on a set number of years. So your additions were less than the depreciation on those.
So, okay, so the assumptions changed. Go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, yes, yes, for the ERS, that's the only thing that, and there was a little bit in the length of service, in the LoCEP because they have to go by GASB 73. So when you change the discount rate, the numbers can fluctuate a lot. Deferred outflows of resources decreased $213,000 to a balance of $768,000. This was a result of changes in the actuarial assumptions related to New York State pensions and the LoCEP. Total liabilities decreased 857,000 to a balance of 7.7 million as a result of changes in the actuarial assumptions related to the village's other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB liability. Deferred inflows of resources decreased $26,000 to a balance of $857,000 as a result of changes in the actuarial assumptions related to the village's New York State pension plans and OPEB. Let's see. Total net position increased just over $1 million to a balance of 1.2 million. The change in each classification is as follows. Net investment in capital assets increased $14 to a balance of just over $1.9 million as a result of the decrease in net capital. As a result of the decrease was offset by, okay, as a result of the decrease in net capital assets, which was offset by principal payments unrelated debt. There was a couple of write-offs in there. Restricted net position increased $2 to a balance of just over $15,000. This was a result of interest on funds related to capital projects. Unrestricted net position increased $1 million to a deficit balance of $682,000. This deficit is a direct result of reporting OPEB as required by Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB Statement Number 75. In accordance with state guidelines, the village is only permitted to fund OPEB on a pay-as-you-go basis and is not permitted to accumulate funds for this liability. This liability is really a projection of what you would pay into the future for retiree healthcare benefits. You pay this in your monthly premiums as you go. It's kind of a phantom liability, but GASB wants you to report it. And all governments are recorded, reported as well. This is village-wide as well. Still, the village's revenue increased by $38,000. The major factors were program revenue was $1.2 million, which was an increase of $19,000 over the prior year as increases in operating grants were offset by decreases in charges for services and capital grants. General revenue was about $3.6 million, an increase of $18,000 as increases in real property taxes and licenses and permits were offset by decreases in other revenue sources. Expenses were $2.6 million, a decrease of $56,000 from the prior year. This was mainly a result of changes in the actuarial assumptions related to the village's pension plans and OPEB. These changes are discussed in more detail in notes four and six to the financial statements. This is financial results of the general fund. This is modified accrual. You do not include long-term assets or liabilities. This is what you normally get from the clerk. Total assets increased 377,000 or 22, 20.2% to a balance of 2.2 million. This is mainly as a result of an increase of cash and equivalents and interfund balances. Total liabilities increased $171,000 or 69% to a balance of $419,000. So it's mainly a result of increases in payable due to timing as well as interfund balances. Deferred inflows of resources increased $5,000 or just roughly about 80% to a balance of $11,000 due to timing of funds received in advance of the recognition criteria. Overall, the total fund balance of the general fund increased $200,000 or 12.5% to a balance of just over $1.8 million. The change in each fund balance classification was as fell. Non-spendable increased $850 to a balance of just over $6,000 as a result of an increase in prepaid insurance. Assigned decreased $11,000 to a balance of $327,000 as a result of the village decreasing the amount appropriate for the subsequent year's budget. Unassigned increased $211,000 to a balance of $1.5 million. Revenue was $2.4 million, which was an increase of $150,000 over the prior year. This was primarily from increases in real property taxes as well as licenses and permits and federal aid. Expenditures were $2.2 million, which is, which was an increase of $314,000 over the prior year. This was primary, primarily a result of increased expenditures related to building repairs and police vehicle purchases. No, I was asked to include something about the water and sewer, which I did not have in my presentation. The water fund was budgeted to utilize $205,000 of fund balance for the, for the year. Actual fund balance increased $79,000. The savings was primarily the result of actual expenditures being $262,000 less than budgeted in the home and community services category as purification and distribution expenditures were lower than estimated, estimated. At May 31st, 2022, the water fund balance was $962,000. This is 182% of the 2022 expenditures and other uses. Fund balance in the sewer fund increased by $35,000. This was an increase. This increase was primarily the result of expenditures for repairs and improvements being less than budgeted. At May 31st, 2022, the sewer fund balance was $257,000, which was 49% of the 2022 expenditures and other uses. Back to the presentation. These are just an informative upcoming pronouncements. None of them are really going to affect the village at all. The biggest one was GASB 84 leases, which was supposed to be implemented during the current year. The village currently had no leases, so there is no effect of that pronouncement. This is our summary of the report to the board. The significant accounting policies are described in note one to the financial statements. Accounting estimates were reasonable and supported. Financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We had no difficulties in performing our audit or disagreements of management over any accounting, reporting, or auditing matter. We will obtain a management representation letter upon approval by the board of the financial statements. There were no significant changes to the planned audit strategy or significant risks initially identified and previously communicated to those charged with governance as part of our audit planning communications. There were no matters noted relevant to the audit, including but not limited to violations or possible violations of laws, regulations, risk of material misstatements, including fraud risks, or tips or complaints regarding the village's financial reporting that we were made aware of as a result of our inquiry of those charged with governance. We are not aware of any consultations about counting or auditing matters between management and other independent public accountants. Nor are we aware of opinions obtained by management from other independent public accountants on the application of generally accepted accounting principles. There were no disagreements with management about matters whether or not satisfactorily resolved that individually or in the aggregate could be significant to the village's financial statements or to our auditor's report. And there are no other matters that we can, that are significant to the oversight of the village's financial reporting process. They have not been previously communicated. We did issue a management letter. This was in regards to the dormant capital projects. There's a number of accounts in your capital projects fund for old capital projects. It was our suggestion that you go through and you close these out. You look at any funds that are remaining and determine the proper application of those to other capital projects, or if they should be going back to the water sewer or general fund. That's the conclusion of my presentation. Are there any specifics to the financial statements themselves, or?
I don't have any specific questions on the statements, but I, I would say that once again, this demonstrates that they're very tight ship that the village runs in terms of managing our affairs. Thank you, Michelle. On, on the question of dormant capital projects, this is something that we're going to need to look at in the, in the spring. There are a number of projects that are needing to be completed that have been sitting for quite some time. Please, Michelle.
John, I think what we're talking about for the projects, there's a two H funds. Accounts. We're talking less than 10,000 in each of those bank accounts. They're old, old, old sewer projects that just need to be cleaned up. I've, in all honesty, I've looked into it before and I've gone back to board reports and I've never got to the 100% mark of actually closing out the accounts. But I am aware of it and you know, that's something that I can work on.
Yeah, as Michelle mentioned, they're not material, but there are a lot, there's, it starts with project H1. I think you're currently working on project H16. So there's a number of just nothing material. It's just getting, going back and just closing out those accounts so they're not showing up within your accounting system going forward.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I read that as if related to projects that we've yet to do that we have budgeted for.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, as Michelle had mentioned, it's, there's roughly about $10,000 hanging out there in all these old projects. And we're talking $2,000 here, $1,000 there. It's just, they're hanging on and they should just be closed out and move on with it.
It's kind of like, like, like cleanup filing, like you file your papers every so often. I have to clean up some accounts and just close them out, you know? It's having savings account with very little money in it and just consolidate it into our other bank accounts.
And that comes forward to us as a, a recommendation from you and we.
Yeah, it's, like Michelle said, it's just more of a cleanup, just to get those off your books. It, like I said, it wasn't material, but just a recommendation.
Thanks. Any questions from other trustees? Michelle, is there anything else that you would like us to know from your perspective before we move to the resolution?
I don't think so. Actually, just one quick comment, you know, fund balance is always a big topic. And you know, some of the fund balances have increased, but specifically a large increase is the water fund. But of note, because of the increases over the past few years in the water fund, we can pay for that Catskill aqueduct and the projects that, you know, need to be done. So it's kind of like the village has been using the fund balance to save over the past few years to be able to pay for large projects or projects that, you know, if we don't want to wait for financing for two years in the case of the aqueduct, we can at least start the project, you know, still explore financing if we need it or things like that. But we could do the engineering. We can get it going off the ground without having to wait. And that's kind of the, how I see the fund balance. You know, so when you see that it's much larger than the yearly expenses revenue, that's why, because projects they're not cheap in the water fund.
We have a kind of a crappy connection tonight, but I think we got the essence of what you were saying. And yeah, I'm, I'm very grateful that we've had that flexibility now when we needed it related to the aqueduct. So now we move to the resolution. Following, this is resolution 01, our first of 2023. Accepting the results of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 audit. Following resolutions offered by me for adoption and seconded by to wit, whereas the village has engaged EFPR Group LLP, Certified Public Accountants, to conduct an independent audit of the village's accounting practices, policies, and estimates. And whereas EFPR Group presented its findings for the fiscal year ending May 31st, 2022 to the Village Board of Trustees on January 4th, 2023. Whereas EFPR Group found that the village's accounting practices and policies were appropriate, comply with generally acceptable accounting principles and policies and were consistently applied. And whereas EFPR Group found that there were no significant changes made to the process or assumptions used to develop accounting estimates and that financial statement disclosures were neutral, consistent, and clear. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board accepts the findings of EFPR Group for the fiscal year ending May 31st, 2022. And it's a roll call vote.
Trustee Bozzi. Trustee Fatty. Trustee Starbuck. Trustee Woods. And they are following. Initially adopted on this date by a vote of five.
Thank you so much, John. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, you're welcome. Like I like to remind all boards when I do these presentations. We're here year round. We don't charge by the phone call. You know, our fee is our fee. So if the board ever has any questions, both Michelle and Jeff have my contact information and like I said, we're here year round.
I'll send you a signed copy of the resolution tomorrow for your records and then just get me the engagement letter when you have a chance and we'll finalize that.
Yeah, I'll send out the rep letter tomorrow morning for saying. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. We come to our second presentation of the evening, which is here at, at Village Hall. Jeff Demansky is here on behalf of Jewel with a public information session. I hope that our, I hope that our signal is consistent for those who are watching live on screen, but we're recording and there will be a clean, a clean recording, at least of what happens in the room.
And I'll also share a link to a recording of a full presentation that I have that we can share out in multiple ways. We can have a background shot.
So can you remind the public who you are, what your role is with Jewel and why you're here tonight?
Yes, thank you so much for having me here. I'm Jeff Demansky. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit called the Center for Economic and Environmental Partnership, or C partnership. And I am the partner to Jewel Assets, which is the administrator, one of the, I think currently five approved organizations to be administrators of community choice aggregation programs in New York State. And Jewel is the organization that the village, as well as Phillips Town and now Nelsonville and previously Beacon, I think, will still currently Beacon, and a number of other communities have engaged for the exploration of feasibility of launching a community choice aggregation program. And then when launched, the management of that program. So community choice aggregation is, and this is part of our outreach effort. I did share with your kind indulgence, a sign-in sheet to prove that I did speak to people tonight that we share with the Department of Public Service. So that's what the clipboard is, is for signing in. And underneath the clipboard is a flyer, a fresh flyer for the combined events for Phillips Town, Nelsonville, and Cold Spring, which I'll be distributing around the community. Not today, I didn't get to it, but by tomorrow I'll be going distributing the flyer. So community choice aggregation.
This is on our website.
And yeah, so there's a flyer for just the Phillips Town, for the Cold Spring events on the website, which I share, but this one I'll also share with you. Just so folks know about all the events taking place locally. So I won't speak to necessarily the agenda that's here tonight. I will do that in the recording. I thought tonight, just keeping my comments to 15 minutes as requested, we would do a review of where we have been in Cold Spring, where we are, and where we might be going. Including some of the interesting, to use the term, developments that took place over the past year or so. But I'll start with a very brief description, just for, for folks listening and for anyone here who's, who's not fully familiar of what community choice aggregation is. In a, in a brief nutshell, it's a program that was enabled by New York State for cities and towns and villages to change the energy decision for the community members, the residents within the municipal borders, to change the default setting of the energy choice from what was set by the states back in the 1990s during deregulation to a new default that is established by a community typically in aggregation with a number of other communities. To use an analogy, it's like a buying club where like Costco or BJ's Wholesale, you, the consumers, members of the club get a better price for things because it's purchased in bulk. This idea is the same concept here. Deregulation in the 1990s established a supply marketplace for energy, for electricity and for gas. It broke up the full monopoly that utilities had back then prior to deregulation. Deregulation turned the utility companies just into delivery companies. So Central Hudson can only make money for delivering electricity to their customers. That's what they get paid for. Like to use another analogy, like UPS or FedEx or the postal service, they don't make the product. They're not allowed to make money on making the product, electricity in our case. But they are paid to deliver it reliably to their customers, which includes storm damage repair, the meters, the infrastructure, the, the billing services. All of that is what they get paid for and that remains the same. What we're doing in this program is again, changing a state mandated default to a local municipal determined default for the community members as an additional option for them. So to go back to the, the use of the term, community choice aggregation is about a communities aggregating typically to get that sufficient size to give a new choice for, in our case, our focus is electricity supply. So it is based on these individual decisions that individual customers could take advantage of since deregulation. But in essence, now through a buying club, they have the benefit of numbers to make a choice, a new choice to deliver in, in the, in the overall result of the program and the motivation for the program by the state, a win-win-win scenario potential. And I've been alluding to the first two wins. It's the idea of a buying club so that through this bulk purchasing strategy that's vetted and basically optimized by the municipal partnership with the administrator they chose, you can get a better price, a better rate for the electricity that you pay for each month for the electricity you use. A second win is this can be better than the predominantly non-renewable mix of electricity source production that we have made by Central Hudson as a default. But also with our focus, it can be a way to pay less than you would as an individual customer and potentially less than you pay through the utility for the non-renewable for predominantly or completely renewable sourced electricity. predominantly or completely renewable sourced electricity. So that is, as a somebody who's been working in the environmental field for thirty years, this is why I'm involved, is that this is a very powerful mechanism recognized by the state, um, through the, uh, Climate Leadership Community Protection Act. This is recognized as the main mechanism available to municipalities to deliver on the goals that New York State has to achieve its greenhouse gas emission reductions. So first two wins, buying power, reduce price for promoting renewables. The third win, and not an insignificant one, is consumer protection. One of the significant motivations for the state enabling this, and what I found that municipal leaders and community members who recognize this when they understand it is that this is a protection from the bad actors that have existed in that supply marketplace. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of supply companies typically called ESCOs or energy supply companies that serve as intermediaries typically to that individuals could sign onto contracts for. And there are many, many good companies out there. I won't name any names of any companies at all. But what I've discovered is that if someone has not had a bad experience with one of those energy supply companies, they know somebody who has. It's been so prolific that these companies have been unsavory players in the marketplace with contracts that they that people are engaged in contracts. They they're locked in, they seem fixed or they are fixed for a period of time, but when you read the fine print, it turns variable. There's strange fees built into it. They try to get out of the contracts. There is, has been and continues to be, um, targeting of unsuspecting populations, seniors and English and second language communities. So the idea of this program is that it presents and vets and optimizes a package as a new choice, a new default choice, which is um, often surprising to people when they hear about it, not realizing that they're in a default program mandated by the state originally that has no restrictions baked on it. The municipalities that do the program and Cold Spring has done this program from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one and then into a new contract starting in twenty twenty-one, I'll get to that. Um, they offer this package and basically enter into contract on behalf of their community members. So in essence, this access to these rates is offered to use one more analogy, like a a membership to a public swimming pool. Where they're given the membership and you have to say if you don't want the membership, but you can do that at any time without any penalty or restrictions. And if you want to get back into the pool, you can do so at any time. So it's really offered as a public benefit and structured that way by the Public Service Commission. So that's the nature of the program. Again, Cold Spring started as one of the six original communities in Central Hudson Territory to do this program in twenty nineteen. We had a two-year contract. Jewel was the administrator. I was the the local presence within the communities. And we had selected a company called Direct Energy. Um, it was a good program. We had a hundred percent renewable fixed rate that was about in the ballpark of six and a half cents, a little less than that for that period. So six and a half cents per kilowatt hour for a hundred percent renewable source from New York State sources for the full duration of twenty-four month contract. We weathered the start of the pandemic in that and the utility rates fluctuated, but the program still delivered well enough that every of every one of the six communities and three others that were part of that group redid it. That as part of the process, we have to do public outreach and public notice and and reengage through a request for proposals to find a new supplier. And that was done in twenty twenty-one. And we selected for a three-year contract, a company called Columbia Utilities for a fixed rate that was again about six and a half cents per kilowatt hour, roughly rounding um, for a fixed rate for a hundred percent renewables that was supposed to last through twenty twenty-four. Well, twenty twenty-one, we were still coming out of the pandemic and then we had the war in Ukraine, which definitely affected energy markets and prices went really crazy. That was, uh, there's a good, there's a good, bad and good story with what we've recently experienced. The good was with the crazy fluctuations in utility rates for Central Hudson Supply, members of the program, participating members of the communities were shielded from that with our fixed rate. And so protected from very high fluctuations in rates such that over that one year between July of the start of the program and July of twenty twenty-two, um, there was a roughly four hundred dollars per household saving. Um, just because of not paying what Central Hudson had. So it worked out very, very well. Too well from the perspective of the supplier from Columbia Utilities. For reasons that we won't go into at length here, um, they wanted to get out of the contract. And Jewel, acting as the champion for the community, um, worked very hard to prevent that happening. Um, as with the with the support of other communities, um, filed filed an injunction to stop Columbia from backing out of the contract. The Public Service Commission weighed in with a letter on this too, which is very exciting and an indication of the state's interest in this program. But they found a back door out of the program. Leaving us, um, to return to the original default. So it was very unfortunate because utility rates have continued to be very strange. But since July of last year, we've been returned to Central Hudson making our supply choice with some very high rates, I think around fourteen cents per kilowatt hour in the most recent time that I looked at it. Um, but there continues to be, so that's the 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 good and the bad is that they got out of it. The continuing good, the underlying good of all this is that that your administrator or an administrator of a CCA program is your champion to help you navigate this bumpy, curvy road to the new grid that we're still moving towards and to act on the best interest of all the community members. And that's what the administrators continue to do right through the injunction. Um, and that's why they did not focus on an immediate replacement for a supplier. But that interest remained. And so that's where we are today. Where they kept an eye on the marketplace, decided that the fall of last year, things were still very uncertain. Looking at the market projections, the market indicatives, it was not a good time to try to get a new contract for the program. And but they did look and saw that there is still strong expectations and I think even more so with what's looking like on the gas futures that this this year, by springtime of this year, that good rates can be obtained. And they've, this has been actually proven in actuality by other communities here in the Hudson Valley. Um, Rockland County communities have launched, have have accepted for an April start of a program, uh, a fixed rate for renewables. Um, as well as another, a a couple of other communities are going to be tied in with that as well. And the indicatives are still looking strong. So we decided, um, Jewel reached out to all the communities to start the process again to consider, to explore, to look at the responses to a request for proposals, whether we should have a program that would launch in essence in the summer of twenty twenty-three. We will be looking at fixed rate options together. That's going to be requested of the proposing suppliers, the companies that will respond. But it is in some ways the same program as we had before, but in a number of very important ways, not the same program potentially that we had before. It is not going to be the same contract for suppliers. It was strict, but it was left to some degree. If some flexibility was built into it that they were able to get out of it. From what I've explained to me, there'll be more strict requirements within contracts to prevent something happening that has happened with Columbia Utilities. Additionally, there will be additional rate option strategy that Jewel is very excited by, which avoids the zero-sum game of that that is associated with a fixed rate program for an extended period. It's what we're calling, uh, that potentially like a quarterly indexing that can adjust with the utility averages to some degree, such that it's not as big a risk for either the community members or the supplier that might be selected. It means we probably won't end up with a significant financial benefit as we saw in that first year of the Columbia contract, if that, if that, if that pathway is chosen. But it would deliver on the benefits that are more in line that we anticipated and saw with the first two-year contract that we had. Which was, you know, a significant, a significant success in an apples-to-apples comparison, certainly. You know, our fixed rate for a hundred percent renewable compared to what an individual could get in the open marketplace. And and it was even successful in terms of an apple-to-orange comparison. And that, and by that, I mean a hundred percent renewable rate to the predominantly non-renewable rate that the utility offers on a month-to-month variable basis. So we are in the midst of doing outreach again in all of our communities. We're doing it with thirteen communities in Central Hudson Territory. Um, and then for other communities, um, elsewhere for a large movement, potentially for a relaunch of a program with that timeline. Decision to be made approximately, um, late March. Potential acceptance of a rate in April with the potential launch if things are acceptable to all the communities or any of the communities that accept for a launch of the program in early summer of twenty twenty-three. And so that is where we stand. I think I've spoken at some length. There are more public events, as we referenced in the beginning, that are coming up. Um, there will be a recording of this that I'll be happy to share. And and the flyers do have our information line for anyone who wants to ask us direct questions or invite us to speak at any other meetings. We are more than happy to do that, you know, to spread the word. And that is our only ask of everybody is just ideas about how we can spread the word across the communities.
I have a question for you about the quarterly adjustment. Are you able to project how much adjustment might happen in those? I mean, to me, it's much smarter that we're looking at smaller chunks of time and you're more likely to get stronger agreements for shorter chunks of time. But at those quarterly points, do you have any sense of how much variation would be possible? Contract period to contract period?
It's within, there is guardrails within a formula as very abstractly I'll describe now. And then we'll bring Jewel into a formally detailed dive and and then certainly be the time to explore it at the proposal response timeframe. But there are guardrails. Well, it will not be wild fluctuations. It's it's more of like a contained kind of glide path because of the formula related to previous performance of the utility rates.
And we would know that when we are, when we're presented with a contract, that would be something that we could see in detail and present to the public and.
Absolutely. And that's really important too. And we do this advanced like pre-rate outreach and then, but there is requirements and we want to do it anyway and we're there afterwards. But once we know the details of of if it's accepted, of what's accepted, that we do more outreach to explain that to the public.
So every quarter you would be presenting?
Well, we were, we consistently have presence in the in the community and we'll continue to do public education. That's what we do. But I'm I'm speaking specifically to the period between a potential proposal being accepted and the launch of the program. So that's what I'm just referring to right there. But all that information is included in the letters that will be sent to everybody.
And what's the process of education out to municipal leaders and residents about those quarterly adjustments?
It's, well, it would be something new where it'd be a more aggressive outreach than we had had to do in the past because at the beginning, it's, it was like, we want to be continued presence to provide understanding about what's happening. But it was a fixed rate for a fixed period of time. So there was not as much to talk about, if you will, in terms of changing detail. In this case, I imagine there'd be a great deal more to talk about if we, if that is the path that's chosen.
I have a question. The, the way it was done in the past, um, there was a huge benefit to the customers when the price rates worldwide went through the roof. And I remember there being a huge concern just hearing on the street from people saying, well, what if the rates dive down and we're paying more? So, um, there was sort of an equal amount of risk and it's like a higher risk investment or something could go either way. And this quarterly program would kind of reduce that dramatic risk or potential gain. Is that correct?
That's exactly the idea. Yeah. I mean, there still might be, it still might be based on the future projections and the recommendations of Jewel. It's a a fixed rate might still be preferable. But that that is the idea of the adjustable, you know, adjusting rate, kind of chunky adjustable, not monthly.
Right. And when will we know when that decision is made if if the quarterly path is being followed or the annual?
You'll be part of the decision to choose. The idea is that this would go into the request for proposals that Jewel will issue. I remember, I think it's in the month of, in the month of March.
So we have input in advance of the release of the RF.
That, and then when responses come back, it's a collective decision. You know, Jewel, it coordinates with points of contact within each community to discuss what's come back and to discuss what path to choose to go forward. And if to go forward.
So do we need to make our decision before that March?
No.
So just to be part of the RF.
Yeah.
Full action will be presented with, um, rates and.
Probably multiple fixed rates for multiple contract lengths and maybe more than one scenario of an adjustable as well.
But then do all the municipalities have to make a single choice?
Yes.
And how does that, how does that work with thirteen municipalities? How are you, how are you?
Yes, it's worked in the past. And that's, that's the, you know, with preparation for it, making sure what the understanding is, making sure the agreements, um, Jewel does typically share the, um, the energy supply agreement format ahead of time so that that at least, you know, the multiple page document can be reviewed ahead of time so that you can focus on what would fill in the blanks on that agreement, ultimately when it's chosen. Um, but it is something that they've done numerous times now, um, in coordination and it's, but it's, communication is just essential. Really an essential part of this to make sure it's not a mystery to anybody ahead of time. And this is just part of the process, you know, tonight and what we'll do in the coming weeks and months.
Well, if, if, you know, three municipalities choose one way and the rest choose another way.
Yeah, that's, if it comes down to that and they just really did, it's, they probably would, it's, it's not going to be separate contracts for different groupings of municipalities. I don't believe I say that. And I'm always amazed by how many ways it's not black and white. But from my understanding, and this could definitely wrong, they would just not be part of what the majority wanted to do and just not participate in the program.
I just wonder if that's how the Hudson Valley ended up with large groups and then a few smaller CCA groups.
No, it's not. It's more, it's been more a matter of timing. When communities are ready to go. It's always, they've always found consensus about all the communities that have wanted to go. It's amazing that we 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 can't think about this, but they have managed to, to, you know, with the strong recommendations and discussions and discussion dust they place, there has been consensus in every essence and every efforts of our, and Jewel is doing this statewide too.
I'm imagining that part of our consideration of the traditional model or the the four-month model will also be what that looks, what the engagement looks like every four months, what that decision-making process is and how that, how that, you know, how residents will experience that. So, um, is that something that we would be able to talk about in detail with you and Jewel at, at, in that decision-making time? Will you be able to present a little bit more about what that could?
About how best to do it too. I mean, it's, you know, that's the idea of having a local entity is that very available to come. Should we decide like every month or every two months that would be here at a, or hold a public meeting in some form or, you know, recordings of it? That will just lay out a plan to definitely have presence or, you know, sending messaging through, um, newspapers or other forms to get the word out so people understand what's going on. For me, that's the most beautiful part of this program would be education.
Most beautiful and also the most difficult because there's the potential of, um, it becoming background noise that people don't pay attention to anymore and then, you know, lose track of and and they have to be reeducated.
Never seen utility bill. Has become background noise. And and that this program is one of the splits that draws attention and often negative attention.
I think utility bills are much of a background.
Well, not, I guess not lately.
Getting nailed by Central Hudson.
Which I didn't speak to, actually. It's one of the things. Thank you for bringing it up. Yeah. So that is one thing I typically want to clarify in these discussions is that, um, the Columbia issue was unfortunate in 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 most ways. It would have been lovely if we had that, you know, still another year plus in that, in that contract. But what confounded the program, um, was, uh, Central Hudson's billing system debacle errors that they were doing, that there, a lot of attention is now being paid to. And it was confounded with our program, but it was really nothing to do with the program. But wonderfully, um, you know, as a presence within the community, we served as a resource answering, I think it's not an over, um, estimation to say that we answered thousands of questions, uh, for people about the challenges they were having with Central Hudson. So it's another element of the program is that we're an education and and support resource within the communities when a program is live.
It's kind of a a perfect illustration of what you hope to avoid in terms of variability and I think the billing issues are separate from the very, from the price variability, but the price variability is what you hope to avoid.
Yes, and it has been so extreme too. In the last six months, you know, four cents, four and a half cents at one point is twenty-two cents. It's been a crazy fluctuation from Central Hudson.
Any, any additional questions? Jack, um, so I know that you have a number of public events, um, and that you had also talked about some other ways to get the word out um, through the newspaper. Can you explain maybe any other ways that you'll be, um, providing information to the public or questions you have about that?
Yeah, um, so we have social media packages. We're pushing out multiple social media efforts very, very, very soon. I'll be sharing them in both individual postings that can be done, shared and linked and it's live, you know, of the social media post. Uh, letters to editors, we, we, we have these drafted. There's a press release actually coming out, I think, tomorrow from Jewel describing the whole program and efforts, um, attending meetings of other groups. Uh, this is often the best way for us to get the word out to chambers of commerce, any other groups. We have, this is our ask is building awareness, not only to invite people to come to our meetings, but to attend meetings, to help people, uh, homeowners associations, meetings, we try to do that as well. Um, always pursuing schools, um, PTOs and PTA's have been our major access point, but given the wonderful nature of the program that this is a today's solution for addressing the climate crisis, I've really striven to try to have schools be partners in helping to spread the word in what we do. So basically trying to engage every stakeholder that's willing to work with us to help spread the word of what we're doing. We have, you know, the flyers for events, brief descriptions about what we're doing. We'll have the links to the recordings. So there's a whole library of past event recordings that are available, but we'll have the one for our current state where we're at.
So you need, um, maybe the village board's help on getting the word out through social media. Um, through, we have it through our website. We have this other event and then, and there's kind of an open ask to, um, community members to identify places.
Meeting members to identify places, the schools, other groups, you don't have those lined up.
Well, things are in the works, but yes, let's just say that. Thank you so much.
Very much. And we will send folks away.
Invitation, the slides you sent me, is it okay if I put that? Yeah, absolutely. And again, there'll be a recorded walkthrough of those slides that I'll share with you as well. Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You could add a couple other names.
And I have a lot more of these colored flags. See, I have them in the basket. They're in the back of the assignment, but I'll leave a chunk of Jeff and I'll become distributed them as well.
Okay, so moving on to our other business. Item A, this is a very, another very happy discussion to have. So you'll recall that. Assembly member Sandy Galiff, at her departing term. Recommended the village for a SAM grant. Through the Dormitory Authority for. Repairs at Village Hall and we were, we have confirmation. We knew that it had been approved by the Ways and Means Committee, has now been approved. By DASME, so we are on the book for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Michelle and I don't think Michelle's on the call anymore, right? We're working with DASME right now on the documentation we need to provide. And this is, you know, we've been. Now for a year dealing with. Building issues in Village Hall, the leaking roof. The poor ventilation in the basements, which is a mold problem that creates unhealthy spaces for. Throwing things for working. There's some space configurations we need and some some security. Issues we need to address in the building and so, you know, I had been. Meeting with different contractors and specialists on different topics and realized that really the the best way to approach this, that's the way we have done things in the past as villages, sort of look project by project. But this building, there are a lot of things we need to think about. With this building so that we make good choices also from an energy perspective and that we. Can appropriately phase. We're not going to be able to afford everything at once, so what do we, what's the, what are the most urgent things we need to do? What are the things we can? Address with the money we have and plan for the future. So I met with. Local architect Justin Kaker. He is the architect of the Town Hall Rehab. And the Building Department Rehab on Cedar Street. He is, has also done a lot of work in our historic district, so he is, he is well familiar with. The requirements of the historic district. I had an informal session with him. In which I asked how we might tackle this. His recommendation, which I think is is very strong, is to do an existing condition survey. We have no, we have no floor plans for Village Hall. I mean, they may be somewhere. But we don't know where, we don't know where they are. But we need to document the conditions that we have so that we know where we're starting and where to go. Next, and from from the the existing conditions, we can determine phasing. And so. We are, Michelle and I are meeting with him and Tweeps, I think, too, right? Next Tuesday, where he's going to put forward a proposal for. The professional fees related to that. Professional fees are a different category. We don't need to bid that project in this, that work in the same way that we would have. Another kind of, another kind of project because it is a professional service. And the process of him creating. The existing condition survey and the phasing. Can meet the, will meet the requirements of documentation that we need to provide to DASME. So I had a conversation with DASME today talking about where we are. We had gotten a notice before meeting thirty days to turn in the documentation. I called and said, well, wait, there's no way we're going to be ready for this in thirty days. Are we still a candidate for the grant? And the answer was, how much time do you need? We'll work with your deadlines. You are, you're ID'd for the project, so as you work with your architect. Work, work with us, getting the information forward. So. That is my proposal as the next step is to sit down with with Jason next week and see what he puts forward for the proposal. Any questions, concerns, ideas? Thank you, Sandy Gala. And enjoy your retirement. Okay. Say that again? Well-earned. Approval of minutes twelve-seven. I made some modifications. To Jeff today, which which folks have not seen, if you would like to. My changes are in, if you would like to take a moment and look at them or we can table it and approve them next week so you can see what edits I made. Or that I didn't do that sooner.
Yeah, I have a couple modifications too that I didn't get into the computer.
So we table it until next week?
Email me. I'll email a hard copy of Word version of this. If people just want to make changes or something.
I I imagine that we probably overlap in edits that we made. Okay, approval of bills.
I make motion to approve bills batch number six seven five nine. The amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand ninety-one dollars and seventy-four cents. And was there anything of special note from the trustees who reviewed these bills in terms of what that they contain? I think it was more of the the water meters. And yeah, the sex water meters, all of some of the other. Yeah, on engineering, yes.
Han's been, Han's been working pretty constantly with us on the product. Money well spent, yeah. Okay, so do we have a second? All in favor? Thanks a lot for staying on top of that. Okay, last is a Boy Scout Award. So we were invited, you'll recall that. Last year, Owen Carmasino, who's a person in Street Residence, did as his Eagle Scout Project. New signage for the nine eleven memorial. It was a sort of an unknown memorial tucked back off the road that no one really. Ever knew was there, not ever, but two people knew was there. And so Owen worked with different community members to design. Secure materials for, he went through the public process with us here in the village, meeting with the Rec Commission and the Historic District Review Board and earned his. The highest award in Boy Scouts as an Eagle Scout with that project in addition to other community service. So I have been invited to go to an event recognizing him and another Phillips Town. Fresh Eagle Scout on Thursday, and I would like to take a proclamation from all of us. So this is, we just, we just put this together. So if we wanted, I can either read it or we can take a moment and folks can look at it. It's recognizing what the award is, what Owen did and. Now therefore being it resolved, go ahead.
There's not a copy in here, so what are you?
Read it? Whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetime by instilling the values of the Scout Oath and Law. And whereas scouts achieve their ranking by fulfilling requirements in areas of leadership, service and outdoor skills. And whereas Village of Cold Spring resident Owen Carmassino of Phillips Town Boy Scout Troop Four Thirty-Seven. Has proven to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America, attaining the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. And whereas Owen earned the rank of Eagle Scout through many contributions to his community, as well as a specific award project. Working with community members to create and install signage that draws public attention and increases visitation to Cold Spring's previously little-known nine eleven memorial. And whereas Owen solicited and coordinated generous contributions from community members for the project, including the durable stainless steel and plexiglass the sign is made of. And whereas Owen participated in the village's public review process, I could just write this rather than that entire preamble, sorry. Public review process for proposals, making presentations to the Rec Commission and the Historic District Review Board. And whereas even while studying engineering at Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute in Troy this year. Owen continues to use his skills and initiative to help the Cold Spring and Phillips Town communities. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees in the Village of Cold Spring, on behalf of all its residents, joins with Troop Four Thirty-Seven and recognizing this bright and outstanding young man. For his many accomplishments and specifically for earning the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout as a Boy Scout of America. I feel like something we can all sign on to.
Absolutely.
Vote to do that? So before we leave tonight, I have a blue pen. We can all sign, have them down and. Find your spots. If anyone would like to come to the event tomorrow, it's at seven thirty at Our Lady of Loretto in the Parish Hall downstairs. And then Phillips Town. Legislature Montgomery and State Senator Rolison will be recognizing both boys. We very much congratulate Evan Masek as well, but Owen is our, our village residence. Thank you very much. Um, public comment. Michael has a hand raised.
My certain with the Highlands Current, I'm just wondering how you're feeling about the Jewel proposal. Are you? Still waiting to see which way the village ought to go? Are you convinced that it's a good thing to join again?
I think we need to hear from the public. I just, is there any particular comments that other board members would like to make?
I mean, it it's hard to say until we see the proposal, but I I think overall the CCA. Is a great idea. It was unfortunate that it fell apart, but but again, I think the the community really needs to decide.
Thank you. Does, does anyone know how many people opted out of the program the first time? I mean, it was. A pretty high rate of participation, I think.
It it was a pretty high rate. I don't know, but I'm sure that Jewel or Mr. Demansky could provide you. Those numbers. I I feel encouraged by the possibility of a quarterly. Re-evaluation. Makes I think more 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 likely, as Eliza said, to to avoid. High variability over a longer term by being able to make.
Okay, thank you.
Modifications along the way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Walter, Walter's gone. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Awesome. See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Anne, for helping.
Oh, I didn't say thank you for the decorations while we were on.
No, 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 you did already. You sent me.